And today is Tuesday, October 12th, and I'm calling to order the Management and Internal Services Committee meeting. Let's start with an invocation. If you'll please join me in prayer. Lord, thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for allowing us to be here today. Thank you for the rights and blessings we have, including the right to assemble and to govern ourselves. Be with us today as we make decisions that that impact our our community, our neighbors, the county. Some of these decisions are are hard. These are tough issues often, and please be with us to help us make um make our votes in fairness and in truth. In your name we pray. Amen. Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Republic. One nation. As for...
Um, before we get started, I want to recognize some special visitors we had with us this morning. Um, I understand we have some folks from Leadership Columbia County's adult class with us. Y'all stand up. Let's see you. Introduce yourselves. Tell us where you work and your name, and let us know who you are. Very good. One more. Very good. Thank you all for being here with us today. I hope hope your um your time with us is worthwhile and you learned something. All right, um, we have a quorum here, having three committee members. Um, can we have an approval of the minutes of the last meeting, gentlemen?
Oh, she took a root.
Second.
So moved, and how about today's agenda? Any changes?
I believe it's set for your approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions from either of you? Very good. Let's move forward. Um, do we have any presentations this morning? See, none and nothing on the consent agenda. Let's move directly into debate. Mr. Johnson?
First item of your consideration is a service agreement with Mosaic Center. Uh, this is from Commissioner discretionary funds in the amount of seventeen hundred fifty dollars total. Staff recommends approval of the service agreement.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved, next.
Next item, we have your consideration is revisions to the comprehensive policy manual. As you know, we do this on a regular basis as we as new things come up. We make revisions as necessary. This is a revision to policy number one oh five point one, public records. We have just making sure that we stay in compliance with public records. As you know, we get a lot of requests for public records and open records. Uh, this makes sure that our policy is in line with the law and also make sure that that uh we have a policy that does not allow things to slip through the cracks. Uh, staff recommends approval. Move to consent.
Thank you. And this is something we just recently did change the procedure on the something?
We recently identified um a a sole person or function having control over the open records.
Refresh my memory, who that is? A clerk. Very good, very good. All right. Um, we have a motion and second to move to consent. Next item, please.
Uh, next item of your consideration is our December twenty twenty one committee meetings. Um, as you know, typically in Christmas, typically in December, as Christmas falls, we have all of our committee meetings on one date. And then we have um the commission meetings that follow accordingly. So staff is recommending that we have all of the committee meetings, all four of them combined on Tuesday, December fourteenth. We'll start the committee meetings at eight thirty that morning, and we'll run until all four have have been completed, and staff recommends approval.
Is that acceptable to our other commissioners out there? Do we? Gentlemen?
Move to consent.
Second.
Thank you. So moved. Um, next, Internal Services.
The first item I have for your consideration is the fiscal year twenty twenty three, section fifty three eleven Rural Transportation Program Application with GDOT. This is for our public transit system. The operating funds are the same as for fiscal year twenty twenty two, and you see those outlined below. The this year's application includes a replacement shuttle van with a lift at a cost of sixty four thousand five hundred eighty one dollars. Our part is a ten percent local match, six thousand four hundred fifty nine dollars. GDOT does require that we go ahead and send them these funds before they will um execute the contract for fiscal year twenty twenty three. So staff recommends approval of the application with authorization for the chairman to sign the final contract.
How many shuttles do we have in operation? A total of, they're not all um with lifts. Some of them are just regular vans, correct? Very good. And that's the one we're replacing?
Yes.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved, next.
The next item I have for you is also a public transit item. This is adoption of the revised GDOT Title Six Program Plan. They have asked that we do a revision. The the plan was first adopted in November two thousand fourteen, and every two to three years, they ask for a revision. Based on the census data, the plan was revised to include Korean language translation. I believe once a certain population gets to a thousand, we have to um offer the the services for the translation for that group. And so we have amended the plan to include that. Staff recommends approval of the revised plan.
So when you say offer translation services, what what does that entail?
So this is uh the process that individuals can notify us or or give complaints. And so if they believe they've been discriminated against, and so we have to be able to translate for certain populations, once they get up to a thousand.
Isn't that right, Jeff?
Is it a thousand? It's a thousand, right, Jeff?
So what are we translating, the the policy book, or I'm confused?
Jeff, come on up. I'm gonna remind staff to come up to the mic if you need to speak. Please, thank you.
Uh, Chairman, what we provide translation for is the complaint form, a notice that's posted in all of our service vehicles. And therefore, if somebody gets on the vehicle, feels like they were not treated equally, they have a process to follow to let y'all know. We would follow then the standard policy. We do not translate the entire policy, just the notice and the complaint form.
How many different languages do you have to post inside the vehicle?
We post three languages in all the vehicles now: English, Spanish, and now Korean.
You knew. Okay. I was just a little confused. I didn't know exactly what we're translating. So it's not we have to provide a person for them. It's just the these specific documents.
Yes, just the notice of the policy, the complaint form, and then it would come to y'all.
Interesting.
Move to consent.
Questions?
No.
All right, thank you. So moved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jeff.
Next.
The next item is the required budget adjustment for the fiscal year twenty twenty one audit. Um, I bring this to you every year. It is a requirement from the Georgia Department of Audits. The final expenditures for all departments must be within the legal level of budgetary control, which for us is the department level. So we're not allowed to show any department over budget within the the audited financial statements. So attached is a list of all of the departments and funds that I have gone through and reviewed, and I've put an explanation of why they need to be adjusted. It's all within normal operations for the county, nothing, nothing alarming.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions about the budget amendments?
We'd like to point out, just as a compliment to our staff, that you have seven departments in the general fund that are over budget, the largest being the Board of Elections, which we knew, we actually planned it that way. Instead of putting the money in their budget, we planned to adjust at the end of the year. And anybody that went over budget, um, we were aware of that ahead of time and had to make, you know, the the decisions to be able to do that. So I think it's a pretty good testament to our staff out of all of our departments, and as large as our budget is, to have overages only in these seven departments. And then, and really, the the bulk of them being in elections, which was a planned thing. So again, kudos to our staff and Ms. Reese and her team for for doing this. And financially, we remain in very good shape.
I agree.
On that, if I might add, yeah, not only did was that a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase for the Board of Elections, but just saw in the recent audit report that that was all flawlessly. It wasn't, it was planned, but well, we knew it was gonna happen. It was well done.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other comments?
Move to consent.
Second.
So, um, next.
The final item I have for you is um Lincoln County contacted our Fleet Services about purchasing some of our surplus vehicles. They would like to purchase two F-150 pickups and one Dodge Charger patrol car. You can see the information on the individual vehicles listed and attached as a copy of the intergovernmental agreement. We would like to sell these to Lincoln County for a total of seventy five hundred dollars. The staff recommends approval of the sale of the surplus vehicles with authorization for the chairman to sign the intergovernmental agreement.
Move to consent.
Second, with a comment, my truck has more than ninety five or a hundred in surplus.
I would uh and move to consent, but I would like to to comment that we've been very fortunate with, you know, good budgeting and 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 planning and so forth, that, you know, when we look at the fact that Lincoln County, bless them, called and asked for, you know, uh, our surplus vehicles, it feels good that we are able to help them and that and that we're able to go buy new things for our for our staff. They can have new equipment and um and and new things. And so when we look at our our neighbors next door, they're happy to get a hundred thousand mile Charger for their for their folks. And so that should make us very grateful for what we have here. But I also want to ask, are we gonna be able to find new trucks to replace them? It's very hard to find.
We are struggling.
Well, these have already been replaced, right? We're not surplusing things.
Yes, they've already been replaced.
Okay. Yeah, we're not surplus anything. It's not been replaced. As a matter of fact, we're holding on to some vehicles right now that we're having to continue to get some life out of because we can't get replacements.
Good. Maybe that'll figure out a way to keep them on longer and buy less trucks.
Yeah, but also for for our visitors, please, you know, we want our leadership students to 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 recognize that we do have great relationships with our neighboring counties. And we're very fortunate to be able to do things like this, to help them out. We were gonna surplus these anyway, but to to help, you know, help somebody next door get get something that they can use, kind of makes you uh grateful for what you have and and appreciative of those relationships. All right. Ms. Reese, is there anything else?
That's it.
Very good. Next, we have uh technology. How are you today, Mr. Blanchard?
I'm fine, ma'am. How are you?
Good. How much money are we gonna spend today?
Not a penny.
Really?
Yes.
Well, tell me.
Finally!
Yeah. Tell me.
All right. Well, the first item I have for your consideration is a Georgia broadband-ready community ordinance for the county. Um, state of Georgia has a program called the Georgia Broadband Deployment Initiative that they released in twenty nineteen. That's essentially a statewide strategy. Um, it's very general, very vague, but one of the provisions they have there is for uh local counties, local governments, counties, cities, to be able to pursue the uh the broadband-ready certification. Now, obviously, the county here, Columbia County, already has a very successful broadband program. So in essence, this is us adopting a state uh model ordinance that the Georgia Department of Community Affairs created, modifying it to fit our organization, and then pursuing this certification simply as a, I'll say, a feather in our cap. However, there are opportunities down the road, most likely, uh, when grant money is released, that stipulation will be on there that in order to qualify, you need to be Georgia broadband-ready certified. So um the ordinance is our answer to that. Uh, once it's passed, we can submit our application to the state uh for that broadband-ready certification. Um, this ordinance won't cost us anything, and it does not affect the day-to-day operations of the broadband utility.
We were already doing all the things on the checklist. We just needed to fill out the paperwork and get.
In essence, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I just want to point out that the the state of Georgia decided to do a broadband-ready initiative to get communities ready to do broadband five years after we after we launched our broadband.
After us, that's right. So this is similar to the work-ready, film-ready, those type programs.
It just allows us to get grants.
Good. Questions?
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved, next.
Next item I have for your consideration is Verizon Tower Attachment Site Lease Addendum. Um, we've had an agreement with Verizon to use the County Camp Road Tower since May twenty fourteen. Um, they've requested an extension for that. Um, so the new agreement, if approved, will go into effect at the end of the current lease term uh in in twenty twenty four, and will extend to twenty forty nine. The overall expected revenue uh to the county is going to be one million, one hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and five dollars and two cents. Staff recommends approval.
How do you determine what the price is that we, that's what is, how how many years?
Uh, it's it's over twenty five years. The previous one was for fifteen.
But thirty six, thirty six grand a year?
Yes, sir.
That, how do you measure that versus other leases in this space?
Well, it it's it's market. Um, they make an offer. Uh, we go out and and check and see what the going rate is. Uh, just what's happening in that industry. We make a counteroffer, and this is where we ended up at.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next.
Next item I have for you is indefeasable right-of-use agreement with uh Planters Communications to lease some of our dark fiber. Um, this is actually a a smaller one. Um, Planters has has been a business business partner of ours for a while now. This is the fifth IRU that we have with them. Um, they want to lease nine point six miles of fiber. We'll have uh uh overall, nine thousand three hundred and thirty dollars will be the minimum that we'll get for this because the intention is for Planters to, once they lease the fiber from us, then we will receive thirty percent of the proceeds from a revenue from their customers that they use along this line. Staff recommends approval.
So the thirty percent lease, in addition to the, like, twenty two, it says fourteen hundred eighty two dollars?
That's correct.
Plus the thirty percent?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because I was gonna say, if that was thirty percent of the revenue, how much revenue?
And what is the significance of the word "indefeasable" in the title of the agreement?
It basically means that it it's locked in. The indefeasable right-of-use means that that over the the those years, they can use it wherever they want to.
So all all telecommunicating?
Oh, so we, oh, legal opinion? This is gonna cost me.
It's a legal matter.
Uh, that came from our DC Council that helped us in the very beginning with all of this, uh, that knows the federal laws. And we have to stay within certain lines, um, because we got federal money for this project. So rather than giving cable, um, after you give, right, cable?
Okay. There's nothing.
It's a term of art that keeps us in the lines.
Okay, nothing nefarious, nothing weird, just.
No standard.
A big word.
It's language used to employ attorneys.
That statement probably caused me.
Threatened by attorneys to perpetuate the existence of attorneys.
Very good. Do y'all have any other questions?
Move to consent.
Second.
Thank you. So moved. Do you have one more for us?
Yes, ma'am. This is an addendum to an agreement with Pictometry International for uh digital orthophotography. Last November, the commission approved an agreement for digital orthophotography, which uh is photographs taken from the air that are linked with our GIS, so they've got coordinates on them. Um, the that contract was signed then, and upon delivery, recent delivery of the product, our staff was doing quality assurance, and we determined that we weren't quite happy with the way that the uh the images looked. In layman's terms, we wanted the 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 county boundary squares to be transparent from the county line over, and they were white, which means that if we overlaid any other county's data on our maps, it would have been blacked out or whited out. So uh they said, sure, we can fix that. Uh, we'll do it for free, so there's no cost. But they did, their their lawyers, perpetuation perpetuation of lawyers, uh, determined that uh we had to have an agreement. So that's all this addendum does, is authorizes us to get the imagery in a slightly different format.
Because that's a lot of big words.
No additional cost.
At no additional cost. That's the important phrase to remember.
That's why we're already paying a lot of money.
Orthophatography. Other questions?
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Anything else, Mr. Blanchard?
No, ma'am.
Are there any other um committee items? Any legal matters? Thank you, sir. Let's move into staff reports.
The first item, just for your information, is our personnel savings. You can see that we've exceeded our budget goal already for the years. Personnel savings are concerned by thirty three thousand, eight hundred seventy two dollars and thirty eight cent. We are doing a better job of of recruiting and retaining our talent, I think. Um, you will see our our turnover rate. Um, we calculated that differently at the request of Chairman Duncan. Uh, so we've taken out the new hires out of that calculation and and doing it just strictly based on the separated employees versus our number of employees, Mr. Chairman. And um we've also put that in a chart for you, uh, so we can continue to track that. But uh you can see that the in the uh uh third quarter, uh, our turnover rate was was down a bit. So we'll see if this trend holds true, and we'll continue to track it this way if that's what you want. I think this is what you want to see as opposed to the way we were doing that. Um, and then we have some graphs for you there as well. But again, all for information. I'll answer any questions if you have any. It is, yes. Yeah, so we uh we actually do have the highest employee count that we ever had in Columbia County. Um, this is adding the the grass-cutting crews and some of the crews that we added in the last budget. So we have now uh gotten to fourteen hundred employees. Uh, we have been in that twelve to thirteen hundred number for many years. But at the same time, our our citizens have continued to rise, as we know, our new census numbers are out, and we continue to have the best employee to um citizen ratio, certainly amongst our big smart counties, but probably in the state. We we do a lot with 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 less.
When Harlem's Water Department um came under us, how many employees did we?
We only took two.
We only took two, okay. So this didn't impact this.
Two, yeah. We only took two. This, what you're seeing now is us filling those positions that were approved in the budget, and really is for the growing county. So as we're adding parks, as we're adding, you know, different things, maintenance and buildings and those sort of things, we have to have people to take care of those things. Um, and as some of you may argue, we still don't have enough grass-cutting crews, and we've added uh two, so.
We have an extra crew.
Right, right.
I'll come help you.
Yeah, so that number should be fourteen hundred and three.
That's right.
No, she's not paid technically to cut.
All right, any other questions? Right, next report?
The first report I have for you is the year-to-date budget report. This is for the month ended September thirtieth. We should be operating around twenty five percent. Um, I have listed some of the major funds for you on the rec sheet. And of course, revenues are still a little under, but the taxes should be received, start being received in November, and those numbers will go up.
Looks like we're on track and doing well, correct?
Yes.
All right, spots update?
The next item is the sales tax update. We have received funding for the month of August. That check was just over two point five million dollars, and our annualized percentage increase is now at twenty one point five six percent.
Still going up, or is it flattening out the percent?
Um, right now, it's um it's still kind of going up, but next month, I think you will see it'll start going back down. What, we we will have a full year of the internet sales in our calculations, and so I think you'll probably start seeing it taper taper down a little bit.
We stay well above, if we continue this path, Scott, can we accelerate the payment of debt?
Um, we are accelerating the payment of debt to the extent that we can. So we're we're paying it off as fast as we can. Some of it is not callable. Um, so we're actually, if it's not callable, we're trying to figure out are there ways to refinance it to make it cheaper, but there's really no way to pay it off any faster. We would love to pay it off faster. We're in a position to pay it off faster, but if the debt's not callable, we can't.
Got it.
And one thing I failed to mention, I I got a text from our HR director, and I appreciate that. One thing I failed to mention on our employees was we added the new judicial circuit. So we added several employees because we stood up an entire judicial circuit that are now all, well, not all. Some of them are state employees, but many of them are Columbia County employees, so that really added that number. And I thank you, Dr. Carney, for reminding me of that.
That's a good point. And how many total new employees did we get when we opened the Performing Arts Center? Just a couple?
Uh, just a couple. Those were in the budget. Those were in the budget. I think we had five, I think it was maybe five total. Um, four or five. But within, when we added, when we added the judicial circuit, obviously, those
It was a handful.
Yeah.
Became our employees, but we took the money that we were spending giving to Augusta Richmond County and
We still saved six hundred grands.
That's right. Still save money.
Was the media here? Did they catch somebody write that in the paper? All right.
It wasn't, it's all fake news.
Fake news. Fuzzy math. Any other questions on our updates so far? Okay, investment report?
Yes, attached is the August investment summary for your review.
I don't have any questions.
No. Good place, since the market seems to be sliding slow.
I'm sorry, what?
We're in a good place because the market can invest in high-risk things, obviously.
We have people on a regular basis calling, you know, trying to have us move money, invest, and whatever. And Ms. Reese and I look at those as those come up and become available, but we're in about the best place we could be right this minute.
Will Rogers said, "I'm not concerned with the return on my money. I'm concerned with the return of my money."
Right, yeah, right. Yeah, right.
Any other questions on the investment report? Having none. Is there a um any commissioner or public comment at this point? All right, I have no participation from the uh from the audience. Let's see. I don't have anything for executive session. And if there's no other business for the committee, we will uh we will adjourn and come back for the next committee meeting in
A few minutes.
Nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock. Thank you.
It's good.
Darned. Adjourned.
Call to order the Planning and Services Committee, October the 12th. The invocation and the pledge, place of the first meeting. We do have a full quorum. Had time, I know you did, to read the minutes. Okay, so moved. I think we had an addition, Johnson, to the agenda.
We do. Mr. Chairman, consideration item I-2A would be a easement for the sheriff's administration building from George Power. Okay?
Add that to the agenda. Any presentations?
No, sir.
We'll move on. No consent agenda. We'll move on to the debate agenda. Cover the item A1, Developmental Services.
First item I have is alcohol beverage licenses, Augsburg House LLC. Applicant has, has applied for an alcohol beverage license to sell beer and wine for on-premise consumption from 4460 Washington Road, Suite 17. Applicant has provided all the required information, posted a notice on the property, the September 20th. This is actually a transfer of, of license from applicant's husband, who passed away, and as staff is recommending approval of license at the November 2nd, December 21, I mean, November 2nd, 2021 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Consent.
Second with, do we always blackout the birth date?
The birth date? I'm, yes.
Okay. I'm just wondering.
Okay.
Date of birth.
Move on to Planning Services.
All right, first item up is an ancillary dwelling. As you know, the limit is 1,800 square feet and greater than that, requires Board of Commission approval. The applicant is requesting a 2,200 square foot ancillary dwelling or a pool house. As you probably in the backup, they are removing a small ancillary dwelling and the pool to put in this proposed pool house. The principal dwelling is 5,365 square feet, so it is significantly larger than the ancillary dwelling. Staff is recommending approval. I can answer any questions you might have.
Question?
Second.
Next item.
All right. The next five items are actually all the same, but they are individually numbered due to their in, five lots that they are. Basically, what we have here is a retaining wall along the back property line, or in the backyard, if you will, of all five lots. One continuous wall, if approved. This is an encroachment permit for, easement encroachment permit for the retaining wall to cross these property lines, be within the rear setback, which is also an utility easement for the county. So staff is recommending approval, and it is for 5,409, 5,411, 5,413, 5,415, and 5,417 Victoria Falls. Right. I'll answer any questions you might have.
Are there any other considerations, height, permits, inspections?
No variances required due to height and any of that, just, just the wall and the utility easement.
Consent.
Okay. All five items were moved to consent. Next item.
All right. Last item I have is utility easement acceptance for Cornerstone Creek. This is a development within the city of Harlem. However, as we have accepted the water utilities requirements, we are accepting the water lines, sewer lines, that sort of things. So we had to get utility easements for those services in the city of Harlem. That is this agreement. Staff is recommending approval.
So we'll start seeing.
You'll get more of this occasionally. I mean, we're not probably gonna get a lot of it, but in this instance, yeah.
Second.
Okay. We'll move on to, the next item was the item that we added to the agenda.
I'll take this one. This is a request for authorization to sign underground easements, aerial easements, and an authorization for construction of underground easements. So as part of the new admin building at the Sheriff's Department, we need to relocate a Georgia Power pole, which requires a new easement to be issued. They're also going underground to the new building and existing buildings. That requires an underground easement. And they also have a underground construction authorization that you have to sign to allow them to build underground to services. So it's three documents, all to help us facilitate the construction of the new admin building.
Recommend.
Approval.
What's it cost?
I have not received a cost.
Twenty dollars. Move to consent quickly.
Uh, that was easy when you said $20. Okay. Uh, any legal matters?
Bill every month, yeah.
Then let's move on to staffing, staff reports.
Uh, attached for your consideration and review with no action required is the September 21 Planning Department workload report.
Any questions, comments?
Also included in the backup is the August 21 Plan Review workload. And I'll point out that we're averaging about nine calendar days on plan reviews, getting them in, getting them through, and getting them back out.
Questions? Uh, we'll move to the Development Services Report.
All right, the first one we have is the September 2020 and 2021 Development Services Report. A copy of that report is attached for your information. No actions required. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to address those.
Questions?
All right, the next one we have, September 2021 Development Service Financial Report, and a copy of that is attached as well for your information. No action is required.
Questions?
No questions.
And lastly, we have the temporary event alcohol permits. Attached is a copy of those permits for your, for your information.
Questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Any comments from commissioners or the public? Nothing for executive session. We do all the business. We'll adjourn.
Very efficient. Thank you.
Quickly.